Welcome to the August 12, 2024 Independent School District 152 School Board Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order and I'll start. Roll call on my left, please.
Valen present.
Bergard present.
Mark Court present.
Steph is present.
Bergen present.
Thank you. And Item B will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, Preview of Agenda. Dr. Lunick.
I'd like to make a motion or make a suggestion here that we revise the agenda due to new hires and new resignations. And with that, I would make the recommendation that we approve the agenda as revised.
I'll second. I'll make a motion.
You'll make a motion.
To approve the agenda as revised.
Thank you. Dave?
I'll second.
I got a motion by Laura Lee, seconded by Dave. Move to approve the agenda as revised. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item E, Public Form. I don't believe we have any requests.
They're in them.
Thank you, Deb. Moving on, Item Two, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and have been made available to the school board at least two days prior to the meeting. The items will be enacted by one resolution. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a school board member so requests, in which event that item will be removed from the agenda and considered under separate resolution. To the extent possible, school board member inquiries on consent agenda items are to be made directly to the district administration prior to the time of the meeting. Under Item A Superintendent, we have the July 15, 2024 Work Session and Regular Session, or Regular Board Meeting Minutes, and the August 1, 2024 Special Board Meeting Minutes. Item B, Business and Administrative Services, we have the August Claims, we have the Family Medical Leave, we have the Leave of Absence, we have change in contracts, we have resignations, new employees, and additional staffing approval. Do I have a motion on this, please? Melissa?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Laura Lee?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Melissa, seconded by Laura Lee. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item Three, we have Morehead High School Hall of Honor. Brenda Richman.
All right, this evening, we're going to be talking about the Hall of Honor. Every year, Morehead High School holds a Hall of Honor to recognize notable alumni, faculty, staff, or community members, notable accomplishments or contributions to the community. So we've got Dave Lawrence with us today to talk about the 2024 inductees.
Welcome, Dave.
Good to be here tonight. I just, we'll take a couple minutes and we'll talk about our Hall of Honor inductees for this fall coming up. A little background information, this is our 20th year approximately. We started doing this in 2004 and we've had 20 groups go through. We had one group lunched up with the next one due to COVID, but other than that, we've had a yearly event. These are our 91st through 95th inductees. So it's quite a, it's quite a list if you haven't had a chance to look at that group of people that are in there. I would say it's certainly worth checking out. About the Hall of Honor, I'll just read through this for you. It'll be good to work on my enunciation a little bit here, but recognizes alumni, faculty, staff, and other community members who have demonstrated notable accomplishments or provided significant contributions to their school, community, or society. Alumni are recognized for their outstanding accomplishments while at MHS and achievements following graduation. Alumni may not be considered for nomination until 10 years following their graduation from Morehead High School. And then for faculty and staff and other community members, they're recognized for their contributions to MHS and Morehead Public Schools. Individuals may not be current employees from the school district and may not be considered for nomination until five years following their completion of their employment with the district. So those are the parameters for the people who are considered for, to be inducted into the Hall of Honor. We have a committee that vets the applications we get every year and we, the applications getting the most votes are the ones that are chosen to be inducted. So that's the process we go through on that yearly basis. The first three of the five inductees, I'll just briefly read these. Rose Anderson, a MAPS employee from 68 to 85, I think that says, or 95. I apologize, I can't see that. Founded MAPS Community Education Program and the YMC Woman of the Year in Education in 1987. And Kurt Worgen, who also was, served multiple terms on the school board, active in Morehead School since 1963 and multiple-time Morehead Spud Best Fan winner. August Roji, class of 1974. She's a program leader at Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory and the 2001 CIA Emeritus Unit Citation Award recipient. So those are the first three going in, and the last two are Dave Ness, who was a class of 70, Twin Cities Doctor and Minnesota Best Medicine, Best Original Research Award, 1984. Then Karen Schumacher, a longtime educator and head coach for Morehead High School Volleyball, Girls Basketball, Softball, and Girls Golf, 1988 volleyball state championship coach. So those are the five inductees going in, and obviously there'll be longer bios that'll be part of their awards night that we have in October that we tie in with our homecoming event. The ceremony is on Saturday, October 5, which is that Saturday of homecoming week. We have tickets available starting on September 1. That can be purchased for that event, which is right in this room. Trying to think. That is kind of just an overview of who's coming in. Does anyone have a question about the event, the people?
Any questions from the board? Looks like a great group of individuals for the Hall of Honor.
Very fortunate. They're very worthy, all five of them.
I think that's it, unless you have something else, Dave?
Nope, that's all I got for you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item B, New Activity Requests for 2024. Dr. Damer.
Thank you. Dean Hago, Activities Director, and Holly Strand Riesgard, Riesgard, sorry. Assistant Principal of Career Academy will present tonight on the request for the additional activities for Future Farmers of America, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, and Future Health Professionals. And I believe that they also have some of the advisors here as well. One thing I'll ask you, in the suggested resolution, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America was shortened, so just to be aware of that when that time comes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, thanks for having us and thanks for your consideration on this. This has been, these three activities have been on the table with our Activities Council for, well, I want to say better part of a year. They feel very natural from my perspective. With our district's commitment to the trades and to the Career Academy and the curriculum that goes along with that, the kids that are involved in those programs, we really feel strongly that aligning some co-curriculars to go along with their curricular area is the next step to growing and enhancing those programs. So when Holly and others came to me with the idea, it, something that certainly resonated. And I think when we look at our recent history of additions, especially even in the areas of the arts, whether it be debate, whether it be esports, some of the various activities, the interest level, the activity level has been really, really high. I know that last year, at least, one of these groups, FFA, formed as a club, a club with a non-paid advisor, somebody doing volunteer time, and it was really, really fun to watch and see how engaged the kids were. And that's, from my standpoint, kind of makes it a no-brainer to push this forward and try to make them formally-recognized activities for Morehead Schools.
I guess the only thing I wanted to add, thanks for having us here, is there are six CTSOs or Career Tech student organizations that are recognized by the state of Minnesota. We already have two of them. These are three more that are recognized by the state to kind of fill in those missing pieces. The other one that we're not proposing at this time is DECA. Students do have that marketing component in the BPA, the Business Professionals of America, that is already, already an established co-curricular club. So I just wanted to add that piece.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
So just looking at the proposal of the salary, I'm not sure who this would be for. Does that include things that go on in the summer as well, or is that just strictly the school year, like FFA?
Right. Great question, Dave. When I looked at the salary and aligning that, we looked at the school year. So if there are additional things to be considered, you know, and we, our district has always drawn a pretty clear line in the sand when it comes to state level versus national level, and most things that happen in the summer with most activities, I can't speak for these three, but most three rise to that national level, which is a little bit different category, and we don't account for the national side of things when it comes to our salary schedule. It's more consistent with, we start a season through whatever the state-level event is, and these three are all pretty consistent in their length. So I don't know if I answered that, but certainly we consider everything through the state level.
So the advisors, it's, everything's covered, though, if they do advance to nationals, like their hotel, that kind of thing is covered through us, or is that all on their own?
Nash, anything that rises above a state-level activity, that is, well, traditionally, most, I mean, speech, debate, oftentimes send 20, 25, 30 people, and that is all paid through fundraising. Once you get beyond the state level, when they're competing nationally, then it becomes the responsibility of that team to take care of that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I do think that there are many industry partners that want to see the additions of these co-curricular clubs. So I think that we can always look there, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Just second, Matt. I just want to recognize that member Keith Voat came in. He was a little late tonight, so, Matt, go ahead.
Ready to make a motion, and thank you for your good work on this. Much appreciated. Move to approve the addition of Future Farmers of America, Family, Career, and Community, and Future Health Professionals extracurriculars as presented.
Thank you, Melissa.
I second.
I have a motion by Matt, seconded by Melissa. Move to approve the addition of Future Farmers of America, Family, Career, and Community, and Future Health Professional Extracurriculars as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Good luck with your new activities.
Thank you very much.
Item C, Family and Student Handbook Updates. Dr. Larson.
In your agenda this year, just to try to kind of streamline the process a little bit, I have a document that shows all the changes, and then we're just going to kind of go through those changes one for one. Early childhood and elementary, there was no changes. There's a few grammatical changes in language, but in regards to the actual substance of the handbook, there were no changes, so we're not going to cover those. Just a reminder again, elementary, this was last year, but suspensions for more than a day are prohibited for grades K through 3. That policy kind of came in last year as we were doing handbooks, so it's just kind of more of a point of reference. That's still the case again because that was put into state law last year. So we're going to start with Horizon. Stop me as you go if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll kind of just go through it. Starting with Horizon on page 3, additions here is admin groups just wanted to add the dean of students to the list. So if you go to the Welcome to Horizon, Dan, page 3, you just see Stacy Gregor and Alex Anno are added. So before, it just listed Sister Principal, Principal, they wanted those dean of students added to that. Next classes, under Accelerated Classes, just remove the language of the 1 to 4 grading, which we'll get into a later time of kind of a transition back to more of a kind of traditional scale. It's not really the full traditional, but a midpoint. So we'll get into that later when we get to there, but they removed the language of 1 to 4. So that was just taken out for accelerated classes. Attendance on page 5, there was no, in the handbook, there was no real definition of what a truant student was. There was always tardy, late, and absent, so the truant definition was added. Any students who've been marked absent and are in the building and not attending class. So that's just kind of a definition. We've used that before in Power School marking. It was just to kind of make sure that it was in the handbook as well for the attendance. Cell phone was next. Again, their process really didn't change. It's on page 9. They kind of just put that fourth plus offenses. So just kind of working with students, if they have five or more absences, they want to work with the family to have the cell phone dropped off in the office for five consecutive school days and picked up at the end of the day. So the majority of the process is exactly the same at East and West. Keep them in the lockers. They just added that kind of, for after that fifth or ongoing offense, kind of problem solve with parents. Computer 1 to 1 on page 10. Again, last year at Horizon, they started to not send devices home. We really kept them in the cart and kids checked out hour by hour. Therefore, the 1 to 1 insurance fee wasn't required. It's just recommended for breakages. So we kind of have in some language there that if the breakage is used caused by the student or mishandling or whatever, there is a fee to fix the damages, or you can pay the $40 insurance fee. So kind of the same concept again. We just moved, since it's not going home ever, from required to here's a fee because if it does break, we're going to ask you to fix it. I think a screen's about $120. But if you pay for that fee, that $40, that covers that for that breakage. So we just kind of changed some of the language to update around not bringing them home. So there's still the fee that still covers all breakages, and if you do Power School registration, this is a big part that parents have to go through and kind of understand as they add or answer the questions in regards to the computer 1 to 1 and those breakages. So that add, that language is just added kind of, kind of near the bottom. The paragraph "in the event a chromback is damaged." Again, the fee is the same, just changed it.
Okay, thank you. Laura Lee's got it.
Are we still, is Minnesota still do five online days before we do no-school home days? So would kids take home the chromb-
They do. So yep, so we have a process. If we know weather is coming, a central office team usually meets. We kind of tell principals, hey, get ready for a weather day tomorrow, get a device home and a charger for 5 through 12. K4 does not get chargers, but we try to let them know probably by 11 o'clock or so, so they can get their plans right. So devices go home K12, only chargers 512. Yep.
They do not need to have their own insurance. We'll insure those few days.
Right, right, yep.
Keith has a question also, Jim.
And I appreciate that, making this part optional. And then I just wanted to clarify, the verbiage that I heard from you was, the $40 plan is optional. It's recommended, but it's optional. If they break it, do they have to pay the repair, or couldn't they then pay the $40? Because that, I wasn't quite clear on how you said that.
We've kind of worked both ways in the buildings with the families, so.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that.
Next one for East is change the bell schedule. Just with different classes, something at the east side, they've switched some things up to try to make it a little more efficient, so it doesn't list the bell schedule in here. It'll provide it for the students, act back to school on what it is. It's just not specifically stated here. So they just tried to change the language a little bit on students will follow the schedule for their team because it kind of switches what lunch you have, what different things on that. So it just took out the actual bell schedule. It'll provide it to the kids, just with the fact that they have to follow the team that they're a part of. So that was the switch of the bell schedule. Page 14. So grading, East is moving back to kind of a quasi-traditional grading scale with some standards-based instructional practices. So the bulk of it is still the same, but they will be transitioning back to a traditional grading scale to kind of help a little bit align with what they'll have in ninth grade. There'll be actually specific language sent home to families soon regarding this from Principal Sisted, but we kind of just put that in there on changing that. So it was taking out the 1 to 4 language and just kind of updating it on the traditional grading scale. So families will be getting that email probably next week as they get ready for back to school, detailing a little bit more of the change. So this was just kind of switching and kind of describing a little bit of that move back to the traditional. Page 22 is just only updates for lunch and breakfast. Again, lunch is free if you take the required number of choices. You have to have at least three different items on your lunch tray to be counted for it to cover as free. So that was just kind of changes in here, just updates based on food service. Media Center on 24 was again just updates to the hours it's open. So no change besides just kind of updating when the media center would be open. And then the last one for Horizon was on 36 eligibility. So Corey Holton did his doctor dissertation on activities, and he has worked through a new eligibility process that we are going to be implementing at Horizon. I think I'm going to have him come in September and actually share that a little bit, but we just kind of updated a little bit of the eligibility on what that is. Again, families, as part of their meetings, will have a presentation given to them on the eligibility process. But the eligibility will be checked at Horizon weekly, and there's a process that they go through. It's actually a three-step process before kids actually miss any game time. So it's really focused on keeping the kids in an activity and then providing some after-school homework help through some staff that he found is willing to help out, so that we can still ensure that they're part of the middle school activities, but they're getting the grades and their homework done that they should. So that one is kind of a new process that I'll probably have Mr. Holton come in September and present, just so you can actually see the whole thing, because this is just a little snapshot of a paragraph, but he's got a pretty good process in place that he'll be moving forward this year. Any questions about Horizon?
Not a question on Horizon, but is this the first year we've done it with just the summary and then the edits are in the document?
Yes.
Okay. I prefer, and maybe this is a personal opinion, but like to see the edits because when I was reviewing, I didn't know what was changed. I could just see the summary. So I prefer if it would be highlighted like it was in the past going forward, so.
And part of that was just how late we are. We waited longer this year. Normally, we'll bring it in July, but with some of that cell phone policy, we pushed this back as far as we could. And so that's a big part of, was that, is normally next year, we'll have this in July.
Okay, and I-
It's a lot more time.
That was a follow-up question that I had, so you got that one. But yeah, I appreciate that because I do like the summary, but it was just hard to know what was changed without seeing it. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, next is the ALC. This one, working with Mr. Farandorf, is kind of almost a brand-new streamlined, envisioning with families that he works with at the ALC. We really tried to keep it simplified to what they might want and need. And so it's gone from, you know, about a 50, 60-page handbook to about a 14, just kind of those, here's what we need. He goes through us on, whenever a new student starts, they have to have a transition meeting. He goes through this whole thing. So this whole thing is kind of new. A lot of it is the same concepts. There's only two items that are actually different from the old handbook. Besides, we just tried to clean it up again to make it easier when he visits with his family. These are the 10, 11 things that they really need to know. I mean, this is what he covers with them every time they have an intake meeting before they can start at the ALC. So the handbook itself is a little bit new, but what's in it is not. One change is on page 4. The bell schedule. He has a new kind of a four-day schedule at the ALC, and Mr. Farandorf as well is going to become presenting some of the changes that's happening at the ALC over the last year and a half. And so same number of school days, but it'll be a four-day with Friday being a half-day where students have kind of work-based learning and project-based learning. So students actually will not come to class on Fridays. They'll have four other kind of extended days. You notice Monday and Wednesday is a little longer day. And so this is, we worked this out and got an MOU with the union to kind of try this new schedule. So Friday, attend- Friday attendance was very uh, spotty at best uh, over there. And so we wanted to try something differently uh, to support the students. And this is kind of the one we're going to try this year. So um, new bell schedule on that page four. Again, I'm going to have Mr. Farinor come once they get kind of going a little bit uh, to kind of present some of the changes at the ALC, but this is kind of a big one for this school year is that a change in bell schedule. And then for him, the only other change that for the ALC is on page nine. Um, cell phones, again, a new uh, state law um, is regarding cell phones. Um, and so personal electronic devices, again, um, it's kind of right in the middle. Cell phones are not to be used in classrooms during academic time. Students are not to use cell phones in any area of the building while they're scheduled to be in class. So that's the, the big change. This aligns with the nine twelve that I'll get in uh, next time as well. So it's the same language for the high school. Um, where again, that cell phones will not be allowed uh, to be used at all during academic times. So those two changes, the bell time and the cell phones, um, are the only changes in regards to the Morehead ALC student and family handbook. Okay, we'll move on to the high school. You see on the last page, just for the ALC, uh, he does have kind of a separate calendar that indicates his extended date. So again, those are the days that it's a little bit longer on Monday, Wednesday. Just for your review on there, it's in the last part of the ALC uh, for, for his handbook.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Um, Dan, you want to slide back to that for just a second?
The calendar?
There was a handbook or a backpack um, verbiage that I just had a question on. It caught my eye. Um, the backpack personal items right there, the second, these searches will not be random.
Right.
Does that mean they're, they have scheduled or some?
No, it means there's got to be some sort of reasonable suspicion to do it. Just not going to walk up to someone and just search.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Appreciate that.
Okay, and then the Morehead High School. So their first change um, is kind of on page twelve, uh, with just an updated on meals. Um, so just um, change based on food service. Uh, page seventeen is uh, some updated language in regards to uh, unexcused absences, and this is per uh, policy, school board policy that was updated over the summer. Uh, in regards to uh, unexcused absences, um, we took out the consequence that uh, you cannot receive credit for an unexcused absence. Again, they, they have consequences that they're working through with detentions and other disciplines. Uh, we don't want their learning to be part of the consequence. So uh, the change was they have one week to get in. No matter what they miss for school, you have one week to get that homework made up. So that is actually part of our attendance policy that is just now added in here.
I just had a question on truancy. It wasn't the same definition at the middle schools of this year. So that, that was if they weren't in class, but in school, and here is if that they're not approved by a parent or guardian. Is that supposed to be the same definition or?
We can double-check that. That's kind of what eventually if you have an unexcused absence and we don't hear anything after so many days, it turns to a truancy. And that's kind of a county rule, but I'll, I'll double-check that with the middle school one.
I think that was just truancy there, except if you're not in class, but in the building, so.
Yep.
Thanks.
So that was again, on page seventeen, again, to match up with the change in school board policy. Uh, page twenty-two. Just some updated language on passes. Um, just an updated process on how to do that. Um, again, if you abuse passes, they'll deal with that and you may lose the privileges, but just some updated language regarding the use of passes for students who are leaving the class uh, for various reasons. Uh, one thing that I don't think it's here, but they're working on using an e-hall pass system. So it'll be a, the electronic pass system moving forward. Um, and so hopefully that'll take some of this, um, some of the issues we have where kids meeting up, uh, because we can kind of set that through a process where these kids can't be out at the same time and the e-hall catches if one gets out and stuff like that. So uh, it's a new system. We're just trying to roll out a little bit as we go. Uh, but there'll be a new e-hall pass system coming up. Um, okay, guidelines, just some updated guidelines for visitors. Um, more on where to come in. Um, if you'd look, this is based on the new building. The entrance door four and nineteen, door one is not ready. Uh, so as we're working through some construction, some of these changes uh, for visitors and it's, and for lockers, the next one are specifically based on the new building. So we kind of have those two entrances now. Uh, when phase two is done, we'll bring this back again. Uh, and then we'll update that to uh, the final construction. So for lockers, it's page thirty-six. Again, um, everybody is not assigned a locker in the new high school. However, they have the electronic pass that they can check out lockers. And so that's just kind of updated um, for that language. Um, just again, with not having any specific lockers themselves. Cell phone policy is going to be the same as um, the ALC. Uh, you see cell phones will not be allowed during instructional classes. Um, if you are scheduled to be in an instructional class, you cannot use it either. So it's just passing time and lunch. Um, and I know visiting with Mr. Hague, this is going to be a big one that they work through with individual class meetings coming up. Uh, is, is this new policy and procedure. Uh, so again, the cell phones, it's on page, starts on thirty-six to thirty-seven. Uh, they can be used on passing time and lunch only. So if they're scheduled to be in an instructional class, even if they're in the hallway, they can't be on the phone. Just those times, the passing time and the lunch. Uh, page thirty-eight, update on graduation requirements. Uh, these are per the state.
Sorry to interrupt, but what's the point? I mean, it just seems that wording about providing an email address for children, for students, grade three and above, just seems interesting in a high school handbook. So maybe just thought for sometime next time it's updated, it just seemed.
Oh, yeah, for the?
Yeah.
Their computer use copyright?
Yeah, sorry. It just caught my attention as you were scrolling and maybe for next time.
Yep.
See if it makes sense or not.
Page thirty-seven, yep. Uh, graduation requirements, these are updates uh, from the state. Again, um, one change is science. Uh, before it said three sciences. Now it specifically has to be accredited earth science, accredited biology, and accredited either chemistry or physics. So it's just an update there. Um, and then you do see down at the bottom, uh, the graduating class starting in twenty-twenty-eight will need a point-five credit in personal finance. So again, that was put in. Uh, it specifically said it had to be students in tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. So it's this year's freshman. However, they can't take it as freshmen. So uh, no freshmen are taking a personal finance class uh, this school year. So that's why it's kind of noted moving forward, this ninth grade class and after all have to take a personal finance class of one of their twenty-six credits. So again, these are all based on uh, state law that was passed last year. Forty-two is just based on uh, Mr. Hague presented uh, the new weighting grades proposal. Um, weighted GPAs, and so it starts on forty-one and it kind of goes through forty-two. Um, on how that new process with the weighted GPA and how that'll work with academic letters um, and honor students. So again, last year they kind of had the choice. They could get a weighted GPA and a regular GPA as we move forward to the, to the weighted GPA. So this was put in place last year, just updated this year.
And I apologize if you're getting to this, but I, I think part of was like a valedictorian because there was a lot with a weighted GPA. We're looking to get a smaller number.
Yep, so the senior honor students, it's going to be to the, the Lottie system, much like colleges, and that's listed in here as well. And so it'll visit with the, the students on that one.
Thank you.
Yep. So that's kind of right on the bottom of page forty-two where they detail that one. Forty-five, um, activities, again, just kind of uh, update on, on the process there. There are a process of failing one or more two classes with some eligibility, eligibility checks. Um, and then part four, just kind of detailing out how many credits you need each year to be eligible for activities. So you have to have at least two at the end of your freshman year, ten, eighteen, so forth. So again, just detailed in there more on the process of activities. And the last is parking, and that's simply just detailing again with the new building, uh, switching the parking lots. Uh, that east side, that's on fifty-one, is for student parking. When phase two is done, again, we'll have another parking lot, and this will kind of be brought back again to kind of update uh, regarding parking.
Okay. It was, I, I didn't look through the whole policy, but is, is there a policy or anything in the handbook about using elevators in this school? After this year, I know there's been, I've heard several things and on experience with my own kid about the elevator use and not properly being used. So is there something we could add to a handbook about the use of elevators?
Yeah, I could visit with, yeah, I could visit with the admin team on that.
And how it should be used?
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else?
Those are all the changes for this school year.
Thank you. Go ahead, Keith. You have a question?
For, um, the dean of students was Horizon Middle School. Is that correct?
For East and West.
East and West.
Yep.
Is, is that new? To refresh my memory, I can't recall. Is, is that a new?
No, no, it was just, it was the culture climate specialists, just kind of a change in title.
Okay.
Now, that happened last year. We just put them in the handbook. And then the high school also has a dean of students.
That was my other, were, were they in there? I didn't recall seeing the dean of students at the high school level.
I'm not sure if they're listed. I can double-check. Yep.
Thank you.
I moved to approve the earlier learning, early learning center elementary school, Horizon Middle School, Morehead Alternative Learning Center, and Morehead High School family and student handbooks as presented.
Laura Lee.
I second.
I have a motion by Dave, seconded by Laura Lee. Move to approve the early learning center elementary school, Horizon Middle School, Morehead Alternative Learning Center, and Morehead High School family and student handbooks as presented. Any further questions or discussion on this?
My only question is if something is added for the elevator thing, is that as presented not on there? Is that something that needs to be separate or is just checked into? I'm not sure if it makes a difference or not, but.
I think we can add it too because it hasn't been sent out to anybody yet, has it? Or? Okay, okay. The board okay with that? Okay, no other further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item, okay.
Dave has a good point on the elevators, but we also have an elevator at Horizon. So would it be in our best interest to have matching language at both?
Yes.
Horizon and the middle, and the high school, excuse me. So we're, we're, we're consistent there too. Is that, you'd like to see that?
Well, and I think we have it at the uh, ASP and Hopkins also, don't we? We have the elevators there, I know.
Yeah, so I think.
It might be good for all the handbooks.
Okay.
If we, I don't know if we have them in every school. I don't need a list, I guess. Yeah.
But we do one elementary handbook, so it should, it should just be in there anyway. So
Okay.
Or it's whether they're there or not, I think if, if we're okay with that, I think we should probably have that across all handbooks then.
I believe so. That's a good idea, Brian.
Yep, I believe so. Yep, I agree.
Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, item D, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, employee handbook update. Dr. Damer.
Thank you. Um, tonight we have Ashley Evans with us. She is our new director of human resources, and she'll present um, many significant changes on the handbook, which there are not many.
Welcome, Ashley.
So as Kristen said, there's not many updates to the handbook. So some of the updates to the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five employee handbook are really related to updating of the dates so that they reflect the current school year as well as some contact information changes. So example, removing Sue Winter's name, putting mine in, those types of things. Um, and then really just some cleanup regarding the um, policies. So um, changing some numbering and naming conventions. Um, it was really just cleanup. And then probably the most significant change would be under the sick leave. So um, made some updates so that we're in compliance with the Minnesota Earn Sick and Safe Leave um, time. And really the biggest piece of that was that it included bereavement leave. So that really concludes the updates. I'm happy to answer any questions. Bye.
Is that why it's highlighted in that page Dan's on the sick leave is because there was a change to it? Or is there another reason it's highlighted on this page?
That's, yes. Generally when we make a significant update, we um, highlight it. So last year we actually created this as a live document. So we'll just update this singular document so we don't change it in, in any of our um, to anyone who has access. So that's generally how we've drawn attention to it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Welcome.
Can I get a motion on this? Keith?
Move to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five employee handbook as presented.
Laura Lee?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Keith, seconded by Laura Lee. Move to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five employee handbook as presented. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Item E, transportation agreement with Olander Bus Service Incorporated. Steve Moore.
Good evening. This won't take long. So uh, we were successfully able to negotiate a contract with Olander Bus Service at the same hourly rate as we agreed to with Richard's Transportation and Shuck Bus Service. So at a cut of two dollars and almost three dollars an hour. Um, so they will be taking ten routes for us. Um, so um, what I'm asking tonight is just, is a resolution to approve the award of that contract to Olander. And with this award, we will be uh, a hundred percent for our mission requirement for transportation for this school year, forty-one general ed routes and nine special ed routes.
Thank you, Steve. Laura Lee?
I move to approve the award of the transportation service agreement with Olander Bus Service, Inc. as presented.
One question before the second. Is it or or oh?
It's Olander.
Well, okay, so.
Yep.
Remove the R.
That is wrong. It's Oscar Lima, Alpha, November.
With the change, I'll second.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, one quick, quick question for me. They had five routes last year and now we're?
Uh, they, last year they had, we started uh, with seven and they ended with eight.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. That's good to hear that the uh, bus routes are up to capacity though.
Yes, it's very nice to be here already.
Yes, Keith.
So that's the Detroit Lakes company that's coming. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Are we still paying for the, the deadhead time? It makes sense that we are, but I just want to, I'm glad the rates are reduced, but we're still paying for that.
Yeah, we are in a sense that, so we are providing um, parking space for them.
Okay.
As well as some transportation costs. We renegotiated that down to a lesser amount.
Yep.
From last year, but he is bringing manpower from outside the Frogmorehead labor pool. So that's the advantage.
Yep, I'm glad we're covered. So appreciate that.
Anything else from the board? Seeing none, or I guess, got a motion by Laura Lee, seconded by Matt. Move to approve the award of the transportation service agreement with Olander Bus Service Incorporated as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve, for your work on that. Twenty-twenty-four, item F, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, to, can't say it tonight. Strategic framework. Dr. Lunick.
Thank you. So in front of you on page three-twenty-seven, three-twenty-eight, and three-twenty-nine are what I, what I refer to as our six pillars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And uh, they are student achievement, student support, staff support, uh, financial stability, and resource allocation, communications, marketing, and outreach, and facilities, indoor and outdoor spaces. Those uh, pillars then have a description. Uh, we refer to it as a focus area description. And then we have focus area goals. And then if I could take you to the next page on three-twenty-eight, those focus area goals have uh, definition. And what we would like to do tonight is for you to review these. Tomorrow, Deb will send out a Google form. And we would love it if you would identify your top three areas. And then we would try to uh, um, place you in an area of where your highest number would be. So then what we want to do, once we have those assigned is we will sit down with the uh, individual that's listed there from uh, central office team. is we will sit down with the uh individual that's listed there from uh central office team and the school board folks, and we will then go through and pick out and create four to five measurable objectives along with key deliverables of each of these areas. And then on the second meeting in September, we would bring this back at a work session. So yeah, I have to call you back a little early. Five o'clock is what I'm thinking. And then we would go through this completed, and the rest of the document would be completed. Right now, you're just seeing a portion of it. Uh when we get through this, then we would work through the measurable objectives and the um key deliverables for each of these uh focus area goals. In there, uh we would also identify an owner and a support personnel to help carry out those objectives and deliverables. And then our goal would be to update the board every thirty days or so on where we're at with this. And this gets us to have all our goals into one page or to one document per se. And um our goal would be then to, like I said, update you every thirty days, but we would really value your uh support in filling out the Google form that Deb would send out tomorrow so we could then get you placed. And then we would go from there, once we get you placed. So there's no real um approving this tonight because we wouldn't approve it till September when we would get everybody in and work through uh those measurable objectives and key deliverables. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have, but I just wanted you to get familiar with what we're doing.
Go ahead, Keith.
So the the top three areas, is that like student achievement is an area or one of the four op, are the four options we would identify our top three in there?
So you'll be, you'll be identifying tomorrow, that's a good question, so I'm sorry I wasn't clear. You'll be identifying of the, your top three would basically be the student achievement, student support, staff support.
Okay.
And then you can look through and see how that would flow.
Okay.
And look at what the definitions are, and if that excites you or that's your, that's a priority that you feel you could really contribute to, then we would want you to sign up for that area.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Any more questions from the board about this? Okay, thank you, Doc.
Just to say, good work. Thank you.
Nice, too.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Brandon, for that. And uh we'll move on to item G, resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling school district general election. Dr. Lunick.
Thank you. Tonight, as part of the statutory requirement, uh we need the board to approve uh this resolution uh relating to the election of school board members and calling for that general uh school board election. As you're aware, we're here a week earlier than what we originated, and uh for us to meet our requirements, uh we had to have the meeting tonight because tomorrow is our due date, so we would appreciate um your support in calling for this resolution tonight relating to the school board.
Keith, go ahead.
Prepare to make a motion?
Thank you.
Move to approve the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election as presented.
Thank you.
Laura Lee? I'll second.
I have a motion by Keith, seconded by Laura Lee. Move to approve the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election as presented. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item H. We have a resolution relating to approving a capital levy or capital project levy authorization of the school district and calling a special election. Dr. Lunick.
Yeah, thank you. So tonight is um just another step that we need to take as a board and as a, as a team uh moving forward in support of a capital projects levy. We've started the discussion uh back in June, and now uh you supported that the special um special school, the latest special school board meeting, the submission of the review and comment. This is just another step in the process of making sure that we check all our boxes legally, and this follows, this resolution follows the same timeline in terms of a due date, just like the school board one does. So it worked out from a timing perspective that tonight uh we would bring you this resolution as well. So if I uh could get the school board's support on the resolution supporting us moving forward to seek a capital projects levy, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Can I get a motion? Laura Lee?
I move to approve the resolution relating to approving a capital project levy authorization of the school district and calling a special election thereon and direct it to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four, as presented.
I second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Laura Lee, seconded by Melissa. Move to approve the resolution relating to approving a capital project levy authorization of the s, of the school district and calling a special election thereon and direct it to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four, as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item four, superintendent updates.
Okay, we got a couple of big ones. Uh next week is uh workshop week already. And if you are available, we would love to have you there on the nineteenth at seven thirty, which is a Monday morning, and uh helping us serve breakfast uh that day to our, to our staff. So if there is any availability, not pressuring you to be there, but we would uh love to see you there if it's a possibility. So seven thirty in the morning? At the new high school. Can't miss it. I mean, you could miss it, but. And then Deb will, I'll have Deb send that out in the transmittal to as a reminder. And then the last one is just to give you a heads up, where we will be moving back to two meetings per month starting September ninth. And um and then we'll probably be, hopefully, uh if we're okay with that scheduling, that work session for that second meeting in September to go over the strategic priorities. So other than that, that's all. What's that? Yes.
Is it um Wednesday, the fifteenth, that you wanted us to come to a new employee luncheon?
Yeah, that too.
That?
We'll get that, we'll get that sent out. We'll get all the dates matching, and we'll get them to you tomorrow.
Perfect.
So then hopefully we um won't miss a thing.
Where that was this year.
And that's at the high school too, right? Thursday. Thursday. We'll get all the dates.
Thursday.
Thursday. We'll get all the dates to you, so we avoid any confusion. Thursday, Monday. Give them one day at a time.
Yeah.
So. And that's all I had. So we're back to two meetings a month starting September ninth. We've got the back to school uh breakfast at seven thirty, and then we have new hire or new uh new teacher orientation Thursday uh this week during the lunchtime. And we'll, like I said, we'll make sure that we get that communicated to you tomorrow morning ASAP.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item five, adjournment. Get a motion from someone. Keith?
Move to approve adjournment of the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four school board meeting at six fifty-three PM.
Melissa?
I second.
I have a motion by Keith, seconded by Melissa. Move to adjourn the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four school board meeting at six fifty-two PM. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same time, same sign. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.